in the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome to the Rockwood Board of Education meeting. We would like to thank the administrative team and all the staff and students at Eureka High School for being gracious hosts for our meeting this evening. Thank you also to the ambassadors who are here from our schools to assist with greeting and signing in our guests. The purpose of this meeting is to conduct the business of the district, hear reports about our progress, and listen to the community on important issues. We want to remind all of our visitors that we expect the audience to remain civil and respectful at all times as the board conducts its business. Calling out verbal aggressiveness, inappropriate language, or name-calling is not acceptable. If the meeting becomes unruly, the board may take a recess until such time the audience is appropriate. If inappropriate behavior continues by individuals, they may be asked to leave the meeting. If the audience becomes so inappropriate in their behavior that we can't conduct our business, the board reserves the right to adjourn the meeting. This Board of Education meeting is live-streamed for the community's convenience. Opinions expressed at the meeting are not necessarily the opinions of the Rockwood School District. U2 reserves the right to monitor and block inaccurate and misleading content. That process is beyond the control of the Rockwood School District. We want everyone to have the ability to see and have the ability to hear the business of the district, reports presented, and the comments of everyone who is here to speak. We request that all individuals speak slowly and clearly. We appreciate your cooperation and that you took the time to attend tonight's meeting. May please have a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. Next, could I have a motion to approve Board of Education meeting minutes for April 13th, Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That also passes. And next up tonight, as a special order of agenda, we have a COPE presentation on high school activity programs. And so, we have a lot of amazing students, it looks like, and there are administrators in our building this evening, so I'd like to welcome the principals and students from our four high schools. I don't know how you all have this ready to roll, so in whatever order makes sense for you, you can come on up and join us.
Thank you, President Baze. Directors of the Board, Dr. Kane. It is my honor to introduce one of our sponsors for Best Buddies and two of his students. John Devers is our sponsor for Best Buddies, and Haley Schneider and Charlotte Flowers are here to talk about our Best Buddies program.
Thank you for inviting us. I'm going to turn it over to our students.
Hi, my name is Haley Schneider, and I've been a part of Best Buddies for three years and president of Best Buddies for the past two. Best Buddies has been a club at Eureka High School since the spring of 2017. For the past six years, our goal has been to promote inclusion for our students and in our community, specifically for those with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Our club promotes many successful activities that work to improve not only our school, but our community as well. We've collected over 1,200 coats for our annual coat drive and hundreds of dollars' worth of pet supplies that we donated to the Humane Society. Before the pandemic, we were able to visit a local retirement community around Christmas time to decorate cookies and sing Christmas carols with the residents. We hope to be able to continue this tradition in the future. Every year, we hold sporting events like our widely popular Friday Night Lights, where our buddies play football in front of a crowd of supporters. We have extended this idea into playing similar basketball and soccer games, and recently even had our first-ever fishing event. We invite Eureka athletes to join us in playing, giving buddies a chance to do something they wouldn't usually have the opportunity to do, and encouraging more people to become included in Best Buddies. We also have social events that include our annual Spring Fling, an event in which we invite the other St. Louis area Best Buddies programs to bring everyone together for fun and dancing. This allows students with special needs to attend a school dance when they might otherwise not have the opportunity to go to the common homecoming or prom. This year, we hosted our second annual winter performance, a variety show. This event showcases the talents of our club members, and EHS onstage performed a dance with Best Buddies, bringing the two clubs together. We used this show to help raise money for an adaptive bike to use in our P mentor's class. With the help of our community and club, we raised the $1,500 necessary to purchase the bike in just one year, which we never expected. We do great things for the community, but the main part of our club is to create one-on-one friendships, pairing students with and without disabilities. My favorite event of the year is our match party, where we match up students based on personalities and interests. I am matched with my buddy Avery, who loves gymnastics and Barbies. Avery has changed my life in so many great ways, and I know that I'm a better person with her. We enjoy playing Barbies, we have watched each other's gymnastics meets, and I am excited that she will be in my prom group next year. Each person in our club has the opportunity to have this experience, and it creates a better overall experience. Everyone at Eureka knows each other, and just a simple "hi" in the hallway has allowed for a happy and inclusive community. Best Buddies shows students with disabilities that they can have a friend, that they can belong, and that they can be included in the student body. It shows non-disabled students that their disabled peers are not that different from them. Students with intellectual disabilities want to participate in school activities and create lasting friendships, too. Best Buddies Eureka encourages inclusion around the school community and strives to create lasting friendships for everyone, because we all deserve a friend.
Good evening, my name is Karen Calcaterra, and I'm the principal at Lafayette High School. This evening, I have three outstanding student leaders with me: Katie Creel, Natalie Bernard, and Alyssa Bernard, and they are going to share information with you about our Key Club.
Good evening, my name is Katie, and I was secretary of Key Club for this past year. Key Club, a community service organization, exists to help others in our community. We want to teach students the importance of service and giving back. At Lafayette, Key Club meets once a month to discuss different service opportunities and form connections between students. During these meetings, we introduce students to the various service opportunities provided through Key Club, as well as recognize students who have gone above and beyond in serving the community. As a whole, Key Club strives to create an open and welcoming environment for all interested students. Students who are part of Key Club are required to earn a minimum of 20 service hours throughout the year. Not only does Key Club give students access to a multitude of service opportunities, but additionally, it is a great place to meet new people.
Hi, my name is Natalie, and my favorite part about Key Club is that anyone in our school can join. Our Key Club has around 200 members involved each year and is one of the largest clubs at Lafayette. There are no hurdles to join and serve in our community, which is very important to us. I joined Key Club my sophomore year, and I'm so thankful that I did. After COVID greatly impacting my freshman year, it was very hard to get to know people at school and in our community. Key Club gave me the opportunity to volunteer alongside and get to know so many students in my school I wasn't able to meet yet.
Hello, my name is Alyssa, and I was the president of Key Club this past year, and I was the social chair the year before, and I've been a member all four years of high school. Over the years, Key Club has established many partnerships with organizations all over the St. Louis area, such as the YMCA, TASC, Spenta, and the Autumn View Nursing Home, just to name a few. These partnerships not only give our members diverse opportunities for how they want to support our community, but they're consistent opportunities as well. For our students, Autumn View Nursing Home is a favorite because there are multiple opportunities each month, like bingo, nail painting, cards, and even a donut social for April. In addition to these outside-of-school options, at each monthly meeting during school, we make sure to do a service project. And these service projects have included making blankets for the homeless and for animal shelters, cards for veterans, and teacher appreciation gifts. Doing service projects at meetings allows for even our busiest members to find a way to serve.
After each meeting, we also like to do something fun. We want students to enjoy serving others as well as connecting with each other. At every meeting, we pick a different game to play. Some of our favorite games include heads or tails, four corners, charades, and a crowd favorite, Name That Song. This involves Mr. Beaver picking a diverse number of songs, and students guessing the title and the artist of the song after hearing the first 30 seconds. Usually, it's a close race between members, and they make sure to pay extra attention to the song in order to win the prize of a cookie cake at the end of each meeting. These fun games allow students to bond with each other as well as having an enjoyable and interactive meeting experience.
Overall, Key Club provides a place for students that may not have a spot in athletics or music or any other school space to have a spot to connect with their friends and connect with the community. Thank you for having us.
Dr. Kane, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Dr. Richard Regina. I'm an assistant principal at Marquette High School, and I have the tremendous fortune to introduce some of our HOSA students. We have here tonight, we have Ashu Shirangam, Ankush Vasaredi, Arnav Busani, Jitin Shridhar, and Stuti Tadapardi.
Hello, everyone, my name is Stuti Tadapardi, and I serve as the 2022 to 2023 state president for Missouri HOSA. Today, we wanted to share a bit of our achievements as an organization. For those of you who are unfamiliar with HOSA, HOSA is an international student-led organization with over 220,000 members across the globe and around 3,000 members within our state. The main three values of HOSA are leadership, engagement, and service.
Our club this year has grown from around 80 members to 114 members, and as a club this year, we have hosted a multitude of successful events. We hosted our first-ever Family Stem Night this year and had a turnout of over 400 attendees and vendors from over 20 different places. We had lots of hands-on activities for kids, like dissected organs that kids could explore, and even a huge inflatable globe that was a major hit. We were able to raise over $5,000 for Be The Match Bone marrow transplant, which is HOSA's national service project. And we rank very highly as a school that has raised some of the most money in the country for this organization.
Hi, Rockwood, I'm Jitin. I'm the current treasurer of Marquette HOSA and the future vice president of Missouri HOSA. One of our main goals here at Marquette this year was actually to host a service project with Delmar Gardens in Chesterfield, and what we did was create comfort bags and hand-deliver them to residents at Delmar Gardens in Chesterfield, and it was a really rewarding experience for all of our members who attended. One of our other goals this year has been to expand outreach as an organization at Marquette, and one of the ways we're doing that is by creating a website and also hosting our very own blog page. In fact, one of our blogs has gotten over 5,000 views, and many of our blogs have gotten thousands of views, so it's a really rewarding experience for all of us involved. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, I'm Arnav Busani, I'm one of the current co-vice presidents of the Marquette chapter, along with my wonderful colleague Ashu here. And what I'm here to talk to you about today is some of the other events that Marquette HOSA offers, as well as all the wonderful events my other colleagues have already pointed out. For example, we also hosted our annual MedTalks fundraiser event, where we've invited a variety of all different types of healthcare specialists, from cardiologists to biomedical prosthetic specialists, where we've invited them to share their experiences and insight in the healthcare field, and obviously give that insight to the students themselves. On top of this, we also organize a student council, where they give advice on their experiences as medical students and residents, again, to those high schoolers that need that kind of insight when they're trying to go into these sort of fields. Our MedTalk event is not only very beneficial for the members of our own Marquette community, but also for middle schoolers and their parents, where they can also gain knowledge about what it takes to go into the healthcare industry. On top of this, for the first time this year, we also hosted a social event for club members called The Winter Tide, where all these members in our club were able to interact and converse with each other, and that's all because here at Marquette, we're all about investing in our community and strengthening those relationships, as long with investing in the future for both middle, for all middle schoolers, high schoolers, and adults even, when we talk about the impactful field of medicine.
Hi, Rockwood, I'm Ashu Shirangam, and I am the other co-vice president of our Marquette HOSA club, and one of the biggest parts of HOSA is participating in competitive events. And every year, HOSA members participate in the State Leadership Conference, and this year, we sent over 70 students to participate in the competition held in Rolla, Missouri. And we are proud to say that 33 HOSA members have qualified to the International Leadership Conference that is being held in Dallas, Texas this summer. Our Marquette High School club has conducted several successful events this year, but it doesn't end there. We also have had an impact on Missouri HOSA as well.
I'm Ankush Vasaredi, and I currently serve as Missouri HOSA's president-elect, and next year, I'll serve as Missouri HOSA's president. And along with me here is Jitin, who has recently been elected at this year's State Leadership Conference as a VP-at-large for Missouri HOSA. So as officers for the Missouri HOSA, what we do is we further market's connection with Missouri HOSA and use our platform to spread awareness about important issues in the healthcare field and try to involve more students within HOSA at both the Missouri level and at the school level at Marquette. So thanks for having us, Rockwood, and have a great night.
I'd also like to mention that there are sponsors here, Ms. Lisa Del Pizzo, she's in the audience.
All right, good evening, I'm Emily McCowen, I'm the proud principal of Rockwood Summit High School, and it's my pleasure this evening to introduce one of our more active organizations on our campus, which is our PRISM organization, and we have four wonderful students who are going to share their experiences with the organization, as well as their sponsor, Ms. Ivy Hartman, is going to share some history and some general overview of the organization.
Awesome, we're super excited to be here. We're excited all the time, though, in PRISM. PRISM, actually, the acronym stands for People Rowelling in Support for More Acceptance, and it was founded in the early 2000s by RSHS students with the philosophy that goes along with, you know, the national organization of a GSA, a Gay-Straight Alliance. And I remember those seniors who founded it, and it was really only a handful of students back then. The goals of the organization have always been the same: to foster a safe space for students to learn and grow from one another, to generate awareness of LGBTQIA+ news and events, and to provide resources and serve as a resource for the Rockwood Summit and greater community to learn, grow, and foster mutual respect. As leaders of the group, we actually have a cabinet of six students, and that kind of fluctuates from year to year who our, but our leadership is. Rather than having traditional roles of presidents, vice president, we just have really strong leaders, and so they apply. And then, this leadership group, these are four of our senior leaders on the cabinet that will be leaving us, and this truly is a student-run group, so I'm going to let them tell you a little bit more about what we do.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Man, I'm a senior at Rockwood Summit. I'm on the cabinet for PRISM. PRISM meets once a week to, as a safe space for queer people at Rockwood Summit. We usually start off the meeting by sitting in a circle and going through our names and pronouns, and then we tell each other good gay news, which is positive queer news for the community, and then we talk about events that we can put together to raise awareness and visibility for queer people at Rockwood, as well as to rally acceptance.
Hello, my name is Melanie, I use she/her pronouns, I'm currently a PRISM cabinet member, and I have been for two years. I've been in charge of organizing some major events that we have hosted at the school. Two main events that we do are Coming Out Day, which we previously did earlier in the year, and National Day of Silence. Coming Out Day is a day that we celebrate students that have essentially came out and just celebrating what it means to be queer. Day of Silence is a national-led student protest in which students go throughout the day not speaking. The PRISM cabinet provided buttons and stickers for students to wear throughout the day, and we also provided informational packets to give out to staff members and students alike.
Hi, I'm Anmadi, I use she/her pronouns, and I'm going to talk about some of our school-level initiatives. So last year, we hosted three very successful sessions of lunch and learn, so basically what we do during these sessions, we invite teachers to come during their lunch periods, and we provide pizza, and we teach them about the queer community at our school and how they can better support them. So we started off this discussion with talking about queer and trans health, mental health, because it's a very big issue, so that teachers can understand why it's so important to show support for this community. And then we educated them about different identities and labels present at Rockwood Summit to help them better understand the students that they're teaching. From there, we gave them different means which they can use to support the LGBTQ students at our school, and one of the big things is asking preferred name and pronouns at the beginning of each year and each semester, basically, as every new group of kids that comes in, so that they can be accepting towards these kids and their identities, even if it doesn't line up with what's in the district databases. And we also created this pronoun form for teachers, so that they didn't have to do that, but it's also very easy to just tack that on to like a welcome survey or anything like that. And then another thing that teachers can do is add pronouns and their email signatures on their name tags and on their door plates. Obviously, none of these are required, but there's this little act of allyship that can show support for the community and the students at Rockwood Summit. And the really great thing about this is we made a presentation for this, and it can be subtly easy to other schools, because a lot of general information that can be used to support LGBTQ community anywhere.
My name is Ji Shmediki, I use he/they pronouns, I'm also a senior this year. So we do a lot within the walls of Rockwood Summit, but we also realize that queer people exist everywhere, so we try to do things both at an administrative level and at a district level. So we have worked pretty closely with our administration in things to make Summit a more accepting place, which includes updating the language on our welcome banner, making a bulletin board that was hanging up earlier this month, basically describing what National Day of Silence was, to not only other students, but to staff members that might be curious. And then, of course, we do slideshows for Queer History Month, which is in October, and PRISM has also made them for Black History Month. And then we use those to help other clubs make slideshows throughout the year, so we can highlight all sorts of different minorities at Summit. And then we've also done things on a more district level, where we've met with district-level employees, where we have put together a DEI training for parents, which we did last year, and then we've also discussed having gender-neutral bathrooms, which are very common in places like Lindbergh and a few other places in St. Louis. And we've also been working on changing some of the language in our district handbook to be more inclusive to queer students.
Well, as you can see, the energy and enthusiasm and ideas don't come from me, I merely support the students, and this is a truly student-run organization, and I want to say, in the years that I've been a part of this, it's grown. Currently, we regularly have 30 students to 50 students attending our weekly meetings, and students seem to really enjoy having that during our ACLAT. So thank you again for letting us present, we're really grateful to be here.
Thank you all, it's always, I know, probably very unnerving to be a student and come to a board meeting and have to get on a stage, and, you know, normally, I feel like just letting you know, you're all a little bit off the hook because you presented separately, and now you're back in your seat, so we won't pester you with any questions, but we will thank you all again for coming this evening and sharing with us. And thanks also to COPE. Oh, yes, let's give them another round. Thank you to our COPE committee for continuing to bring us, number one, kids into our meetings that we can hear from, who can tell us things that are going on in the schools, but also just really great topics, so thank you for that. All right, we are moving on to Superintendent and Board Comments. Dr. Kane.
Thank you, President Baze. Earlier tonight, the Board of Education approved three new additions to our administrative team. Dr. Benjamin Heverson as the new coordinator of Partners in Education, Melissa Davis as our new assistant principal at Marquette High School, and Dr. Michelle Fitzsimmons as the new assistant principal at Babler Elementary. They will all begin their new roles on July 1. Ben is currently the executive director of Administrative Services in the Wentzville School District, a position he has held for the past year. Prior to that, he served as the district's Director of Alternative and Adaptive Learning. He did that for six years, after working for 16 years at Hope High School, six as a history teacher, seven as assistant principal, and three as the Activities Director. During his time in Wentzville, Ben developed a substance abuse intervention program and worked to establish a health clinic for staff and students, and developed a middle-school intervention program designed for students struggling in traditional settings. Ben earned a Bachelor of Science in Secondary Education from the University of Missouri-St. Louis, and a Master's of Arts in Educational Administration, and a specialist degree in Educational Administration, and a doctorate in Educational Administration, all from Lindenwood University. He replaces Emmanuel Young, who has accepted a position in the Special School District. Currently, Melissa is an assistant principal at Hope High School in the Wentzville School District, where she has worked for the past year. Prior to that, she taught science for 14 years at Fox High School, after starting her teaching career at Lafayette High School, and she taught there from 2007 to 2008. Melissa served on multiple school and district committees, she was a sponsor for the robotics team there, a teacher, mentor, and a PLC leader and department head. She also has participated in Missouri Leadership Development System. Melissa earned a Bachelor's of Biological Science and a Master's of Secondary Education Science from Southern Illinois University, and a Master's of Educational Administration and her educational specialist in school leadership from Missouri Baptist University. She replaces Dr. Dan Ramsey, who is retiring at the end of the school year. Michelle is currently the administrative intern at Fairway Elementary, where she has worked since 2018. Prior to that, she was a data analyst for Rockwood for five years, and also served for seven years at Eureka and Gaggy Elementary Schools. Michelle has served on multiple school and district committees and worked as a summer academy principal and assistant principal. She has participated in Rockwood's Program for Aspiring Administrators and the Missouri Leadership Development System. Michelle earned a Bachelor's of Arts in Elementary Education from Southeast Missouri State University, a Master's of Arts in Educational Administration from Southwest Baptist University, and both a specialist in educational leadership and/or doctorate in educational leadership from William Woods University. Please join us in congratulating all of these leaders on their new roles here in the Rockwood School District. Each year, the Rockwood School District asks members of the graduating class to fill out a survey before the end of their high school careers. This is indicating their plans after graduation. About six months later, the district sends a follow-up survey to check on the graduates and their plans. Survey feedback helps Rockwood High Schools and our officials in ensuring that educational programs are meeting the needs of our students. This year, during the month of April, the Rockwood Research, Evaluation, and Assessment Department will be collecting initial post-graduation intentions from our class of 2023. Parents, if you have a senior this year, please remind them to keep an eye out for the initial post-graduate intentions survey. And if you'd like a snapshot of what some of our outstanding 2022 graduates are up to, check out the profile of a Rockwood graduate series on our website and social media channels in the coming weeks. Rockwood Director of Child Nutrition, Carmen Fisher, has been named Director of the Year by the Missouri School Nutrition Association. She will be recognized during a ceremony hosted by the National School Nutrition Association in the month of May. She is now under consideration for the SNA Mountain Plains Region Regional Director of the Year Award. Carmen, congratulations, and thank you for all- She will be recognized during a ceremony hosted by the National School Nutrition Association in the month of May. She is now under consideration for the SNA Mountain Plains Region Regional Director of the Year Award. Carmen, congratulations, and thank you for all of your hard work and to your entire Child Nutrition Services team and for all of their hard work, literally, that they do every single day to ensure that our students have access to nutritional breakfast and lunch options. Let's give her a round of applause. And finally, tonight, I would like to recognize the Rockwood students who are currently in Houston, Texas. They are attending the first Robotics World Championships. The Bowsons, a team, Bowsons, I'm sorry, no, Bowsons, Bowsons, a team from Eureka High, as well as Rockwood students from two community teams, Four Screen and P3, joint teams from more than thirty nations around the world at this year's International Celebration of Robotics. Four Screen, which features students from all four Rockwood High Schools, and the Bowsons, Bowsons, I'm working on this, the Bowsons. It's bow, it's bow, it's Bowsons, the Bowsons. It's Bowsons. Earned their trips to the worlds, uh, at the regional qualifier in March. And P3, which contains students from Lafayette, Rockwood Summit, and Selvage Middle School is presenting at the first conference and volunteering as student ambassadors. Congratulations to all of these students, and I hope you have a wonderful STEM experience this week.
They gave you the hardest one at the, at the very end, or you saved the hardest one for the very end?
I just made it difficult.
Well, that's lots of good, good news to share, so thank you. Any board comments this evening? I'm very happy for the Bowsons.
Thank you, Director. Wishing them well.
Wow, second in the world? Oh, no. That is amazing. All right, well, moving on to less exciting things, could I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as submitted?
So moved.
Any, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. All right, next up, could I please have a motion to approve Lashley and Bear PC as the district's provider of comprehensive legal services?
Second.
Motion and a second, and Brenda Kirkoffer is coming up to lead us for a presentation.
Thank you very much. All right, the district is currently under contract with Lashley and Bear for legal services, which will terminate on June thirtieth. It is our standard practice to issue a request for proposal for legal services every five years. The RFP was issued in January, and the firms were, and the firms were asked to provide their qualifications, a summary of professional and staff training, any excluded areas of law, client references, professional memberships, certifications or licenses, their process for answering questions and revisions to board policy, and their fee schedule. We received responses from five local law firms. The responses were evaluated by a committee using these criteria. Fees and experience had the highest degree of importance and depth of, and depth of legal services. Training support and staff resumes were also considered as part of the evaluation process. Lashley and Bear received a four-point-eight on a scale of one to five, which was the highest overall score. This slide provides an overview of each firm's fees. It includes the average hourly rates for partners and associates. As you can see, Lashley and Bear proposed the lowest hourly rate, which is outlined in green. We vet legal services every five years, and Lashley and Bear has continued to rise to the top since two thousand and six. They've been an outstanding partner, and the district benefits from the fact that Lashley and Bear has the background knowledge and the district's legal history and po, legal history, our policies and regulations, which eliminates any learning curve or lag, lag in productivity associated with transitioning to another provider. On behalf of the Purchasing Department, I'm asking the board to accept Lashley and Bear's proposal and enter into a new five-year agreement through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-eight.
Thank you, Brenda. Is five, um, a typical number to receive when this goes out?
It varies. I think the, the last five years ago, I think we received seven, but it's usually around that number.
Other board question? All right, so that motion is to approve Lashley and Bear PC as the district's provider of comprehensive legal services. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. All right, next, we have another COPE presentation. This is, um, Glenn Hancock joining us up here. And he will be sharing some data with us on MSIP six and an APR update. This is information-only, no motion necessary. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, so tonight, uh, we're going to give an update on MSIP six, uh, with the annual performance report that has come out. Uh, back in November, we shared a brief overview of MSIP six, uh, which is the Missouri School Improvement Program. And through that program is how they evaluate school districts. And they recently released, I say recently, uh, early March, they released our annual performance report for each of the school districts in Missouri. So this evening, we want to answer a few questions, uh, such as just a reminder of what is MSIP six? Uh, what are the annual performance report findings, uh, from that report? And then I'll, uh, share the microphone with Dr. Shelley Will to share a little bit about the action steps that we're taking kind of based on the results of our annual action, I'm sorry, annual performance report. As we kind of mentioned, MSIP six stands for Missouri School Improvement Program. It's a sixth version of it. It actually started back in nineteen ninety-five. Uh, we're exiting the MSIP five version. Uh, essentially, that, this is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's way of evaluating school districts for accreditation, but also ensuring that the proper environment is there for learning and school districts have processes in place to support learning along the way. The standards that are involved with assessing MSIP six, so a school district is required to include in their school improvement plan responsible for leadership, effective teacher and learning, collaborative climate and culture, database decision-making, alignment of standards and curriculum and assessment, and equity and access. So as a district, we're responsible for reporting to the state how we're meeting each of these standards through a various, uh, various number of ways. As a reminder, with MSIP six and this APR, because MSIP six is new, there's not going to be any changes. This is the pilot year for MSIP six. There won't be any accreditation changes with, uh, our accreditation or any accreditation of any school district in the state, uh, because we only have one year of data. We essentially have only the year of two thousand and twenty-two that they're using in the data right now. The new addition of growth data this year that I'll mention here in just a moment, uh, it involves two thousand and twenty-one and twenty-two data, but overall, the main base of our data is the two thousand and twenty-two MAP test. As far as the annual reports, so you'll hear me mention APR, which is just short for Annual Performance Report. And they made several changes of how they'll evaluate districts with this change to MSIP six. Really, the big two things to kind of point out, one, uh, is that we can't compare from MSIP five in terms of percent, percent of points earned to the percent of points earned with MSIP six. They use different scoring categories, as well as the different amount of points earned, or points possible, rather, for each of the categories. The other thing, the other big change they made, uh, is they broke up the scoring from being a hundred percent performance to now they have a blend of performance, which means achievement scores. And also, they combined it with, you have the processes in place to support achievement. So they have seventy percent is performance, thirty percent is continuous improvement, meaning do we have processes and plans in place to continue to help improve the school district? And then the last, uh, kind of major change to point out is they in, they included growth now as a separate category in the scoring guide. Prior, growth, meaning comparing how students did from one assessment to another, was only included or embedded within the total score, as you can get, if you will, bonus points from the original scoring mechanism. Now it's included, included as a separate category that we'll see here, how we did as a district here in a moment. This graph on the screen just represents a comparison that twenty, uh, twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-two. So two thousand and eighteen was the last time the school district, or really any district in Missouri, had an opportunity to get an annual performance report. Uh, because they changed the assessments, uh, in twenty, um, after two thousand and eighteen, and we also had the pandemic in there, we don't have, uh, three years of data to use as part of the evaluation with this. So we started new this year. This is the first opportunity in twenty-two to have an APR. The bars in blue there, uh, those represent the percent or really the number of districts that scored in different ranges. So in two thousand and eighteen, three hundred and twenty districts earned more than ninety-five percent of their points. When you look at how the scoring broke out in two thousand and twenty-two and how it was rearranged, the scoring process and the scoring guide, you can see that only four, and it's hard, there's a little sliver of green in the greater than ninety-five percent, only four school districts in Missouri earned more than ninety-five percent of the points possible. Most of the districts for two thousand and twenty-two, again, the bar in green, the majority are somewhere in the range of seventy percent to ninety-five percent of the total points earned. So you can see there's a drastic shift in the number of districts and where they, uh, percent of points earned based on the new scoring guide that they earned or that they published with our APR. Where does that land for Rockwood? Uh, Rockwood was one of forty-one districts that earned more than ninety percent of their overall points. And I'll share how that's broken down here in just a moment. And you had, and you can see we're kind of looking at eighty to ninety percent of points earned. There were a hundred and sixty-two districts, seventy to eighty percent of the points earned, twenty-three-six districts. You can see where it broke out, um, for this current version in two thousand and twenty-two. So the scoring guide, again, as I mentioned, it's seventy percent performance and thirty percent continuous improvement. When we look at the performance, what they're looking at overall is they're looking at achievement. And achievement is based solely on the MAP data with the achievement or status, which is what percent of your students are scoring below basic, basic, proficient, advanced? Those are the four ranges that students can score on the MAP test. The new area that they added this year was within growth. Uh, and this specifically looks at, as a student takes a test from the prior year, for example, from third grade, and they take a test again in fourth grade, what per, what percent of our students are making average to above-average growth? We also get rated on success-ready. You'll notice there's two success-ready components. There's a performance component, which is, do we have students taking ACT and advanced coursework? And it's kind of the metric. And then the success-ready in the green below, that's continuous improvement. That's going to deal with, do we have the processes in place to support, uh, achieving to the next grade level and even post-secondary? There's a graduation component in here, as well as follow-up. And Dr. Kane, uh, earlier mentioned, uh, that follow-up that we are currently doing the intent follow-up for our current class of two thousand and twenty-three, and even published a story about our two thousand and twenty-two graduates, and we followed up with them. In the continuous improvement side, again, this is, do we have the processes in place? So the improvement planning, do we have a school improvement plan? And the documentation that correlates with that improvement plan? So our overall percent of points earned, Rockwood earned ninety-one percent of the total points possible. It's broken out again into performance and continuous improvement sections. You can see the overall points possible and the overall points earned. And Rockwood earned ninety-one point one percent of those points. As we look a little bit closer, more closely, uh, with performance, going to break out just how performance is scored in that section. What they're moving towards is getting three years of data and averaging three years of MAP data together to produce a singular, what they call NPI, which is a MAP performance index. Based on your MAP performance index, uh, that's where they give you, award you a certain number of associated points in that scoring guide. This year, though, we only have two thousand and twenty-two data available. Next year, there'll be two years of data. The following year, there'll be three years of data that'll be available. When you look at our scoring, uh, from, again, looking at, using MAP tests to see how our scoring broke down, on the left-hand side, you can see there are four areas. Basically, there are four content areas, English Language Arts, Mathematics, Science and Social Studies. And then within each content area, there is a percent of points earned or a score for all students. So that's looking at all students that participated in the MAP testing. And there's student group. So the, the student group is, does the identified category of historically underperforming student groups. Uh, these are students that, um, include who are black, Hispanic, or participate in one of the programs such as IEP, free reduced lunch, or our English Language Learner Program. When you look at the percent of points possible overall, for our all-student category, we have received full points for each of those categories. And then within that student group section, you can see there is an opportunity for growth there within our student group section. Each group, uh, earned what they consider on track, meaning they're making average, uh, performance. And we earned a portion of the points, nearly seventy-five percent of the points, uh, in those categories. The next section, this is growth. Growth can only be earned through English Language Arts and Math. Uh, that's because those are the only content areas that assess multiple years over year. For Science, we only assess grades five, eight, and high school biology. For Social Studies, we only assess in government. For English Language Arts and Math, we give a MAP test grades three through eight. And so we use grades three through eight. We can have the opportunity for growth. And let me back up, really, it's fourth through eight because fourth grade means the third-grade MAP test in order to create growth there. When you look at the growth, when they're looking at, again, do students make below-average, average, or above-average growth? What category do we fall in? When you look at the chart here on the far right, you can see our designation is above-average growth for our all-student group. And students who are in our student groups, average growth. So a positive there is that we're making average to above-average growth for all. But again, another opportunity, as you can see, we didn't earn full points in that category. Growth is the one area that's a little bit different because the way this system awards points, if you look for the scoring guide, it's on a, a bell curve. So there's only one district in the state that was able to earn full points for growth there. It varies by school, rather than just a cutoff, meaning you receive all your points. They kind of order schools based on districts, really, and based on how much growth they make. And then that's how they then divide up the points in that category. In the, in our success-ready graduation and follow-up, uh, so this is part of that success-ready section. You can see that there are a couple of components here, such as career and career readiness assessments. Those are, do we have students taking ACT? Even, do we have students taking work keys? Do we have students taking ASVAB, which is a military readiness assessment? And we do. We have students taking and participating in those assessments and getting a qualified score. And so you can see for CCR assessments, full points awarded. Advanced credit, do we have students participating in advanced placement courses? Dual enrollment, dual credit, we do. Uh, and those students are getting, uh, scores that would qualify them for getting credit in college. We earned full points there. And then our graduation and follow-up, also earning full points, uh, with our graduation status, as well as students after high school are continuing into furthering their education or a career or military. Continuous improvement planning, so this is the section where, before the metrics, what percent of students are scoring in particular ranges. Here, this is about, do we have the processes in place to continue to improve? So with that, we had to include an improvement plan, which we have a district improvement plan the way forward. We also had to submit, Rockwood was chosen as a pilot school, to submit a response to those standards in the beginning, such as leadership, equity and access, uh, teaching and learning. We had to send a response to standards in to them. We will receive that score posted in here in two thousand and twenty-four. The, the Department of Education is rolling that out in a three-year period, so we'll see that score populated in here in a couple of years. And we also have to give a, a culture and climate survey, which we participate, we annually give a culture and climate survey to students. We also offer one to our staff and to, uh, our community as well. And then there's other additional documentation that we're required to submit. And again, there, we can see all full points awarded that we received. The last section of our continuous improvement involves a couple other nuances, uh, here. One is the KEA, which stands for the Kindergarten Early Assessments. Starting this year, we had to assess kindergartners within the first six weeks of school, um, measuring, um, motor skills, reading, and numeracy skills as they're entering school. We earn full points for participation. Our ICAP, which is Individual Career and Academic Plan, are we helping our students prepare for high school and even beyond? Which we earn full points there. And then attendance is the area you can see with the, uh, continuous improvement that we didn't earn full points with attendance. Uh, and I'll have a slide here to talk about that in just a moment. And then the last thing is career expansion. That's an area where they consider a bonus category, meaning if you continue to add on for career and technical opportunities for students. We do a great job partnering with the Community College, South County Tech High Schools. We have a lot of these programs already in existence. This is for districts that are starting new programs, um, not just adding on enrollment, but adding different programs or partnering with just different institutions. An opportunity we have in Rockwood is as we look at expanding our industry-ready credentials, meaning after a student takes a course, let's say around graphic design, that they might get an Adobe certificate. That's an area that we can continue to, um, and, uh, add upon, uh, to receive additional points going forward. But those are an area of bonus points and not a, uh, not a mandatory set of points. With attendance, just switching back to attendance real quick, uh, as you saw, we didn't receive full points with attendance. As you look at attendance for Rockwood and Missouri, you can see where we're at currently for last year, the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. We only received two points out of four. However, we, our attendance percentage, percentage of students who are in attendance ninety percent or more, uh, still higher than the state of Missouri with the attendance. One of the great things that, uh, we've become better at over the years as through the pandemic, offering learning opportunities when students, uh, are unable to come to school. Students have a lot more access to learning outside of the classroom right now, uh, to keep up and maintain their, maintain their academics as we're moving through here. And then the last slide just talks about other accreditation info that is included in our annual performance report, which is the percent of students that we're testing, we're required to test ninety-five percent or more of our students in each of our content areas and other accreditation considerations that we are successful in reporting. And as I mentioned, there's a number of strengths that we've kind of went through here, uh, as we talked about going through the report. Uh, I'm going to share the microphone with, uh, Dr. Shelley Willot to also share, uh, some opportunities for growth and some next steps that we're going to continue to take as a district.
Anytime we get a report like this, we also look at our internal data and then determine some next steps that we would need to take based on what we see. Um, we never take this just in isolation, but we look at it in terms of what we, what we're seeing throughout the year on the standardized tests we give in STAR reading and STAR math in particular. So our next steps are that we're going to start looking at this data in terms of what could we improve on in terms of school improvement planning, working with our buildings to set school improvement goals based on what they're seeing for their students to improve in the future. Um, we're currently reviewing interventions and extensions to support the middle school changes that we're making. We're going to increase some academic lab time in the middle schools. So we want to make sure that we're looking at this data to determine that we have the right interventions and extensions in place to support our students during that academic lab. Um, we're looking at our multi-tiered systems of support in terms of the SEL, mental health and behavior tiers, and really, um, ensuring that we've got the things in place there to support students so that their learning improves as well. And then we're going to finalize our success-ready scope and sequence. We have a, uh, success-ready leadership team meeting to determine a systematic scope and sequence of college and career readiness planning that all students will engage in in Rockwood. And we're getting ready to finish the six through twelve part of that. And then we're going to go back and work on K-five because we want our students exposed to career opportunities early and throughout their career here. Um, another important focus for us is going to be growth for each individual student. Um, Glenn's department works really hard on getting us data reports that we can drill down to individual student needs so that we can identify where that work needs to take place. Um, that's always in the context of our teaching and learning cycle where our teachers are looking at, what is it that we want our students to know and be able to do? How will we know that they've learned it through assessment and, um, feedback? And then how will we respond to that? If they don't learn it and they don't understand it, what are we going to do? And what are we going to do if they've already mastered it? Um, that really focuses on ensuring that our teachers have a clear understanding of the curriculars, uh, standards. They have to have assessment systems in place that really let them see where students are in terms of those standards. And then making sure that we've got the interventions and extensions to support whatever they're seeing in that assessment.
Thank you both. That is a lot of information to, um, take in, so I appreciate that. Can you give, um, just an example when you're looking at that last chart that was up there? Um, when it talks about phase three and we're thinking about like how to drill this all the way down into one of our classrooms? Like how would a classroom teacher of like a fourth grader, um, help this scenario? Or, or, you know, assess a student when you're looking at how will we respond in phase three? So when some have mastered it, can you just get, provide some examples just so that that?
Yeah, in general, when we're working at a classroom level, standardized test data gives us a general idea of where to go. It really is that formative day-to-day assessment that teachers rely on more heavily. So a lot of that standardized test data, we can drill down to a student, but that's one snapshot on one day. So we look for trends. And then when we're, we look specifically in terms of standards. So if the standard is asking students to do something with fractions in particular, we would want to look at how that student does, assess regularly, and then if there's an issue with that. Um, in particular, in our elementary, um, curriculum, usually there's something written into the curriculum that shows them if this is, if they're not doing well on the standard, here are some things that you can do and here are some resources that you can do. At the middle school, it tends to be more generalized for reading and math in some cases, but then very content-driven in others. So it just depends on what they see with that student and what the next step might be.
And Shelley, would you say that our classroom teachers, back to that fourth-grade classroom, then what I'm hearing you say, I think, is they're using more of the day-to-day or STAR assessments, those things that have more of a quick response, um, and, and data right there in their, in their touch point to help those students? Because by the time they receive the scores for these MAP tests, they, they, those are no longer their students.
In many cases, by the time we receive this, it's confirmation of what we've already been seeing in the classroom. So their expertise, they know day-to-day when they're watching those kids and they know their standards and they know where those issues typically are. And if they don't, we've got supports in, um, math and ELA coaches. We've got interventionists in reading and math available to them. So there's lots of the content, curriculum content coordinators, there's lots of support for them if they don't know where to go next. Thank you.
And how is that accessible to the teachers if they do need help with the students?
They just contact us usually. They're, we're in touch with them a lot. Our people are in the buildings a lot, asking questions and checking in on people. So that, we're readily available.
So it's like right away?
Oh, yeah. Okay, yeah.
And Shelley, it's part of your professional learning opportunities as well, correct?
Yeah, yeah. Donette and Renee play a big part in that too, is they're planning things. They're always talking to us about what those needs might be and assessing teachers and asking their needs too. So it all goes together and making sure that we're all pulling in the same direction.
What does this look like with our, um, our partnership with Special School District to help our kids that are in that subgroup? How does that work?
We've been doing a lot of work with them and sharing the resources that we have and teaching them how to use our resources and how we use them so that they can then jump in and either use them or at least have a knowledge of where that's going if a student needs an additional resource. So it really is about connecting with them and making sure that there is conversation going on all the time between the two entities so that we each know what each other is doing.
I was going to ask, how often do you check with the teachers or on the teachers?
Oh, gosh, how often do we check with teachers? All the time. I mean, they're always contacting us and asking PD days we contact, we have spent time with them. It just depends on what their need is and how to contact us.
Do you have, um, committee meetings in every school that address the multi-tiered system support? I'm thinking maybe that's what Izzy is trying to get to.
Yes, each team has a leadership team that works on that in the building level. And that leadership team really knows where to go for those resources. If they don't, then they usually call us in for that too. But they're very well-versed in that. We also have a, um, CE, our CEIS funds from Special School District funded an early intervention team. And those, that team often supports those, um, building teams in order to connect the special education and intervention pieces.
I have one more que- questions for Glenn.
Go ahead.
Um, just for when we're reading the report, some of the designations were, um, on-track or target. Are those the two categories or can they be below, just for reading it since it's new, some of the?
There's two, there's actually four. So if you're looking at growth, growth has three categories, below, average and above. And then if you're looking at the, um, the status, there's four. It's on-track, uh, I was drawing a blank on the other, the other three. But the two below, we're usually in the top two, um, on-track, and I can't remember what they use for the target, target, on-track, and there's, and there's floor, and I can't remember the second from the bottom.
Low-target and way under-target?
Yeah.
Something like that.
They change the, instead of the normal categories, they use below-basic, basic, proficient, advanced, they switch those four around. But target is where they're wanting you to be, and then on-track is meaning you're on-track is target, which is in our top, where we are in the top two for most of our, almost all of them.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
That was very helpful. All right, uh, Dr. Willot, looks like you're not going too far. So the next topic to cover this evening looks like the curriculum development summer twenty-two-three update.
So you had asked for an update on what's happening this summer in curriculum writing. Um, I think I've shared before that most of our curriculum writing, well, actually, all of it is taking place in the summer now because we're not pulling teachers out of the classroom to write during the school year due to subs shortages. And so we are, um, making sure that we're following that elementary curriculum cycle is on an eight-year schedule. Um, a lot of people ask, why is elementary different than secondary? The reason that elementary is different is that our teachers at elementary teach all four core areas. That gives them a year off in between each new implementation. Um, curriculum implementation is a heavy lift for our teachers to, um, adjust and make changes. And so giving them a year to get their feet under them with one curriculum is a very kind thing to do. They do a lot. So, um, our secondary curriculum is revised on a six-year schedule. I want to be really clear that we do have some coursework that probably needs to be updated more than six years, um, our computer science in particular. So when there is a necessary change or if one comes up, we would bring that to the board in between if that were a case. Um, somebody also had asked us, what happens if we get in the middle of that cycle and all that data that we just talked about shows something and it's not up for review yet? We would bring interventions or adjustments to the board for approval to make sure that our teachers have those resources in their hands to adjust whatever's not happening in the curriculum. So that's why we watch that data very carefully. Um, the curriculum writing process really has three stages. Um, the first stage is research and development. That happened during the school year this year and last year. So our teams get together, we bring in, um, experts in the field, we look at research, we look at our data. Glenn's team is very involved in that. Um, and then we look at what, where we're going and where we are. Um, we also survey through Glenn's department as well, teachers, students and parents to determine what they think about the program currently. Then we get into the writing, um, and feedback phase. So we write drafts of the curriculum. Um, there are lots of feedback opportunities that I'll share at the end of this presentation. And then we get into implementation. Um, implementation happens during the summer, getting ready, teachers ready for the school year. So right now, we're doing a lot of ordering to make sure that teachers have their new teacher manuals and resources in their hands before they leave for summer break. Um, this year in particular, the biggest implementation we have going on is K-five ELA. So we're using new English Language Arts resources and lots of training for our teachers over the summer. So here are the courses that are undergoing actual course revision this year. You can see quite a bit, uh, in middle school. We've got social studies, science and math. We've got K-twelve vocal music. Um, at high school, we've got AP Social Studies. But our AP courses really don't go under the depth of an, um, review that our other courses do because that's really dictated by College Board what that curriculum looks like. So really, that's about refreshing resources and letting our teachers choose new resources, um, that are updated. Exploring Computer Science is a class that we're adding to, um, meet the requirements of the DUC computer science scope and sequence that they're going to be requiring soon. Um, we've been in compliance with that for quite a while. This was a course that was a slight hole for us because we made some adjustments. Um, we write our own computer science. We have very well-trained computer science teachers. I think you'll see a lot of other districts adopt Project Lead the Way Computer Science, but we have written our own scope and sequence. And I think we saw that we brought cybersecurity last year as an addition. ASL is American Sign Language. That will be undergoing, um, Level One and Two. And after years of people asking, we are going to write an American Sign Language Three. So, um, we have some kids that are really excited about that. Heritage Spanish One and Two is for, um, students who live in homes where they speak Spanish or they already speak Spanish, so we're going to have that. Um, that course will probably be predominantly offered in the Marquette Quadrant. That tends to be where, um, our families who would need that class are, but it will be available in other areas if needed. And then French, German, Spanish Three and Four will be rewritten. And again, the AP world languages that we'll use for College Board. Um, our feedback process is pretty extensive when it comes to curriculum revisions. The first thing we'll do after these are drafted over the summer is send them out to teachers in the content area who did not take part in the writing process for feedback. Then we have our Rockwood Learning Council members who have the opportunity to review that curriculum. We have our Rockwood Learning Council Parent Curriculum Advisory Panel. That's a group of forty-four parents that represent all the buildings in the district. They give us their feedback. And then we have an open public review, um, where any patron or parent can attend and review the curriculum documents and provide their feedback. I think that's all. Any questions?
How can a parent become a member of the Parent PLC?
Our principals reach out to parents at the beginning of the year when we have membership open, and they will let them know, if you're interested, let me know, and then they'll fill those seats.
She literally took my question. When is the, when is the last, uh, you said that when you guys have a meeting, when is it?
We do two. We had one in December. We just had the last one yesterday. And I offer a morning session and an evening session so that parents' work such, our work schedules can work out with that. So they can choose either morning or evening.
And Shelley, the, um, opportunity for parents to review curriculum has been in place. Is this a new thing?
We've always done that. We've always had a process in place. We've added more in the last couple of years. We added more people to the Rockwood Learning Council Parent Group. Um, but that public review has always been there where anyone can come in and look at the documents. And they're always on board docs as well.
Yep. Good. Thank you.
And the, just to clarify, the Heritage Spanish One and Two, that's going to be a brand-new course?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right, Renee and Donette.
All right, next presentation this evening is professional, uh, learning for summer of two thousand twenty-three. Welcoming Dr. Renee Trottier and Donette Whisker up to lead us through this one.
Thank you. Welcome to our new members. And thank you to our other directors and President Bayes and Dr. Kane for all of the time that you volunteer, um, for us. So, try to get this figured out. Okay, so, um, Dr. Renee Trottier and Donette Whisker and I are actually here to talk about, um, summer professional learning. Uh, Rockwood has always provided robust offerings of summer workshops for years. Um, however, in the past, they were optional for teachers to attend for pay. Um, or they could get college credit or now Rockwood micro-credentials, and they still can do those things. Those are still there. That's unchanged. Um, however, due to changes in the calendar, two district PD days, um, two of those four full-day PDs are moved to summer. So therefore, this year, for the first time ever, teachers actually are required to attend two days of summer workshops in July or August, um, as part of their contract. So those two days replace the way-forward strands that we did during full-day PD last year. And a lot of our board members have actually attended those. So we're actually here to talk about the PD, um, not about the calendar. The board actually approved the calendar in January. However, I've been getting questions about the calendar, and so I thought it would really be, um, valuable, particularly since we have, um, new members, new directors who weren't here when Tracy Edwards came in, in, um, December, um, just to, to talk through that a little bit. So the way in Rockwood and Katie, feel free to, to chime in if I, if I say anything, but, um, that you want to add. But basically, um, Tracy Edwards leads a calendar committee that consists of students and staff and parents and administrators, and they develop that district calendar. I'm part of that committee as a member, um, within the parameters of state law, board policy, teacher contract and feedback from the community and the staff. And then the Professional Development Committee, which Donette and I lead, they actually really work, um, hand-in-hand, and they finalize the dates that the PD will land on. So if the calendar has four full-day PD days, then PDC takes that feedback from Calendar Committee and, um, from teachers in their building, and they set what those days are. Um, so, and then finally, the Board of Education actually ultimately approves that. So I'm going to bring this part up because it's connected to kind of why, why teachers are, are needing to come in the summer. So, um, in December, Tracy Edwards shared with our board and our community that, um, in two thousand nineteen, our state legislators passed House Bill six oh four, which basically says that public schools cannot start until two weeks before, um, that first day.
that public schools cannot start until two weeks before that first day of September, that first, that Monday of Memorial Day. And so you can kind of see the pattern of our calendar prior to that. We started mid-August, and then we ended school prior to Memorial Day. And so the semester, first semester, ended at winter break, and then the end of the school year was again prior to Memorial Day. And so when the school district got, the school calendar got moved back by two weeks, there was not a lot of excitement from our parent community or our staff or students to go two weeks into June. And so that's when our calendar got a little bit more crunched. So five days were basically removed in the sense that that's when our conference compensation days became, sometimes they're on election days or are part of spring break. That's when winter break got a little bit shorter, and so that the semester could end that, that week earlier. And that's why we don't end prior to, prior to winter break. And that's also why we start on a Monday. That's always, people get upset about starting on a Monday. Again, it would, it would move us too far into June. And so that's really important because, because of those reasons. And so now, last spring, Dr. Edwards had shared that as part of the negotiations with the NEA, there were extensive discussions where staff had asked, is there any way we can end this school year prior to Memorial Day, the way that we used to? And that certainly is a desire of the community as well. For our kids attending those, you're saying yes? Yeah, you, yeah, you heard that, for sure. And then those three days after Memorial Day are difficult, the principals report as well. And so therefore, the Superintendent's Cabinet decided to go ahead and go on with that goal and change, find a way, if we could, to change that last day of school so students get out prior to Memorial Day. However, instructions are really important. Rockwood students attend for 176 days. We don't want to change that. Our teacher contract is based on a 190-day contract. They have additional days that they need for professional learning, preparation, and records. Don't want to make changes to that. And so really, in order to get out three days earlier, basically the options would be to take out like that Wednesday before Thanksgiving, take out spring break. That's what some other school districts have done. Or the idea was considered, and ultimately, this is what we have, to take those three, three of those days where students were dismissed for professional development. There's one in September, one in November, and one in March, where those now become student attendance days. So that's where those three days got moved into the school year. And so then those days of learning for teachers are pushed forward to the front of their teacher contracts prior to school starting. So then that way, the last day of school will be before Memorial Day again. So the Calendar Committee actually loved that idea, but they were concerned about our staff. Because of course, parents are going to love it, because sure, teachers coming this summer, and you know, we can have the school year ending when we want it to. However, the Calendar Committee was really worried and wanted to make sure that this was going to work for teachers. And so what they did this year was they presented two calendars. And so one calendar was the normal pattern, the previous pattern that we have, like was up there, where we had those days all embedded in the school year. And the other calendar that was presented, both to the community and to the staff, was a calendar where two of those full-day PDs were moved to summer. So the start of the, of the school year, the fiscal year is July 1, so it would have to be before, after July 1, but before August 14th, because that's the day that they come back. And so Thomas Cook, our president of the NEA, sent out a survey. He actually sent it out to every teacher, not just members of the union, so that every teacher could have feedback. And on that survey, 75% of the staff said that they wanted this calendar where it pushed three of their contract days to summer so that the school year would end prior to Memorial Day. And of course, you know, as you know, it was very, the parent community also wanted that. And so it doesn't mean that this is a perfect option. There are certainly a lot of pros and cons to this system. So some of the pros, there are some topics that work great in the summer. So Dr. Willett talked about that ELA curriculum implementation. So they'll be getting all new resources that they need to become familiar with. So having that PD in the summer will be great for them to be able to have time to, to look at and delve into those resources before, instead of that first week of school, right when they're getting back. So that will be good for them. There are topics like grading and reporting. We don't want to, if we do PD in November on grading and reporting, teachers aren't going to change their classroom practice in the middle of November because they like to have clear expectations for kids, so they don't confuse kids. So that, that kind of thing is better in the summer. Some things are better in the school year. So there's just certainly pros and cons, for sure. Another piece is the departments that run this PD is predominantly the Curriculum Department, the Professional Learning Department, Instructional Technology, Data and Assessment. And those folks get spread really thin when everything's all happening on the same day. You know, so you have, for example, a K-12 Fine Arts Coordinator. She's responsible for K-12 visual arts, for bands, choirs, and orchestra at elementary, middle, and high. And it's, to meet with all of those groups in one day in a meaningful way is very difficult. So spreading it out in the summer is certainly a pro for that. Some of the cons I'm sure you're aware of are really the conflicts. Teachers have their childcare based on the school year because that's what they work. And so there might be childcare issues, obviously vacations. Plans are made a year in advance. That's not unusual for that. Our Professional Development Committee, you know, is concerned about it not necessarily being as job embedded during the school year. And then teachers might be forced to make a choice. We have all of these wonderful options for them, but they might have to choose what fits in their schedule rather than what they most need. So again, certainly pros and cons. Our cabinet really listened carefully to all of those pros and cons, considered all kinds of ideas. And ultimately, you know, with that overwhelming desire from our community and from our staff through that survey, to end the school year prior to Memorial Day, made the decision to go ahead and recommend a calendar that had, that moved these days into the summer. Any questions about the calendar? Because I just went through a lot of information. We had a couple of questions. One was, how will this be evaluated? So all PD is evaluated immediately after teachers attend the PD. And then we also ask, when we do our needs assessment in the spring, we're also looking for implementation because we want to make sure that it's impacting students, that there's implementation in the classroom. Certainly, the Calendar Committee or PDC, after we go through this first year, in the fall, our Human Resources Department is very flexible and can, you know, if there's a change that needs to be made, then, you know, they can work together with the Calendar Committee and, and propose a change to the board if that's necessary for the following year. I had a question from a board member that came to me this week. Would there be makeup days for teachers during the school year? And if they can't make it between July 1st and August 14th? And the answer to that is no, it's just like now. So on February 17th, if we have a PD day, if somebody can't make it that day, then they call in sick or they take a personal day. We don't have a makeup. We're scheduling experts in our field that we can't necessarily make up. And then also, our, our approved calendar is that those first two contract days are prior to, or between July 1 and, and August 14th. So we let teachers change their mind, and, and all summer long, we always do in our office. They can change and shift to another workshop, and, and we can have their needs met, for sure. Okay. Another question that I had was, can they still attend workshops for pay? Absolutely. And then we do micro credentials in Rockwood now, which I've explained previously, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that. But basically, a micro credential is like a college credit. And so it's just an alternate way for teachers to earn their plus 15 or their plus 30 and move forward on the pay scale. The, the pro to the district is, instead of taking a random class out there, our teachers are getting credit for classes that are actually connected to district goals. So all of Rockwood PD is connected to our School Improvement Plan currently. That's the Way Forward. We really focus on those first three goal areas and the last one. So student academic learning is by far and above the largest category of workshops that we have are really connected to specific curriculum content. We also have universal equity, opportunity and access, character and well-being, and workshops for strong leadership. And I shared earlier, these are the groups that really work on the professional learning together. It's not just our department. And then we're really looking for high-quality professional learning. So as I said earlier, if it's not implemented in the classroom, then it really isn't professional learning. It's really a meeting. And we really do respect our teachers too much to create ways to fill their contract. We're not trying to fill a contract day necessarily. Instead, it's just, it's really trying to find that learning that they need in order to implement their curriculum and meet the needs of their students. So I'm actually going to be retiring in June, so I'm going to turn over the what we're doing this summer part of the presentation to Donnette Whisker. She'll talk about the offerings that we have this summer and what implementation is going to look like for us. Before I turn it over to Donnette, were there any questions about, I've got the boring stuff and she has the fun stuff. So were there any questions about, about the part that I've shared so far?
I have a question and a comment. One, the comment, you're very brave for taking on the calendar discussion during the professional development piece of this. Thank you for reviewing all of that, everybody. Two, the micro credentialing, how long have we been doing that in Rockwood?
So this is our second year, Donnette Whisker? Yeah, second full year. So we started that last year in October with the full-day PD. And so that's been, that's pretty common in the business world where you can earn credentials that really show that you've mastered the content. So for us, it's about mastering. Instead of, I attended this workshop, it's I've mastered the content and I've implemented it in the classroom. So those are really those two pieces that, instead of writing papers about it, teachers will be creating like what they'll actually use, and that really helps things actually get implemented.
I would imagine that's been received really well?
It has. It's been received very well. It's very flexible since they can still do college credits and they can mix them. It has really created, it's been pretty, I didn't bring numbers of how many teachers, but it's certainly a couple of hundred teachers that have taken advantage of that.
Thank you.
So Renee, just clarify for me that the two days in summer will be, the micro credentialing will be available for those two days?
For sure. So a teacher, there'll be some workshops in June that are just for pay only, like our usual, and we have some micro credential options. Micro credentials are about 15 hours. It's about 15 hours of work. So they're attending and they're doing some work outside to implement. It's like a college class. And then some of our contract workshops are also, they can earn micro credentials at the same time.
And I heard you that we'll be reevaluating this for next year. I know that some of the feedback is that some teachers do not know which days the particular professional development's going to be, or this year, are we going to be more proactive? And then, because we're dealing with calendar and then PD, and it's, it's the end of April.
Right. So they have known since, we've been talking about this since September of last year. And so November is when they voted, and then in January is when we did the needs assessment immediately. I would, we really wanted to get that out in February. But really, there's a lot of logistics to really working through contracts, having the board approve contracts when we have outside presenters. That takes, as you know, a couple of months sometimes for us to work that back and forth. The logistics of putting the locations for about 150 workshops. So there's more, there's multiple workshops going on each day. So we were really hoping to have that sooner, but what we did instead is anything that we knew. So really, the preference, the priority is curriculum implementation. So anyone who's implementing curriculum probably knew, have known those dates since February. It's difficult even for them because some of them didn't, until their last PD day, they didn't finalize their resources. And just, it's probably not going to be much sooner, but I will say there are asynchronous options. There are people who go to Mackinac Island all summer, and that's where they summer. So they can actually work remotely. They don't have to come in. If something's virtual or asynchronous, there are certainly opportunities for, for people to choose their own adventure, so to speak. You're welcome. Any other questions? I'm going to pass it to Donnette.
Thank you, and hello. I'm Dr. Donnette Whisker. I'm glad to talk to you tonight. And I do get the fun stuff. I get to talk about all the amazing professional learning that we're offering this summer. But before I get into that, I want to touch briefly on how we landed there. So how we decided. So it really is connected, as I listened to Glenn, and I listened to Shelley talk this evening, and Renee, all those pieces come together in addition to reaching out to our teachers. And that starts with our Needs Assessment Survey that went out February of this year. We only had 419 respondents, which is lower than we usually get. We even extended, you know, we asked principals to offer time in faculty meetings. I think February is just really rough for people this year. And so, but we did, you know, we did get some good results, and that's helped kind of guide what we're offering this summer. So some of the big things that they said were mental health, you know, not only teacher mental health, but student, you know, how do we support? We're seeing higher levels of anxiety and stress in our students. How can we create an environment that will help that? Social emotional learning, obviously, curriculum, instruction, and assessment. I believe close to 60% of respondents want content-specific work, like they want something connected to the content. You're going to see that reflected in their offerings. Diversity, equity, and inclusion include to be, continue to be needs and wants of the staff. They want to know how to help all students in their classes. Behavior supports, especially at elementary. Again, in the last few years, elementary teachers are reporting that they're seeing new or different behaviors, and they want additional training. And then finally, how can we utilize assessment that leads to learning? You know, how can we make sure that if we're giving a test, whether those are summative or formative, that we're actually using those to help increase learning? And also, our teachers overall, we have got very talented teachers in Rockwood, and so overall, they really want specialized training. They're like, you know, I've got the foundational knowledge. I've sought some of that out myself. I want specialized learning. So some of their top challenges kind of align with that. So, you know, how do I support students who haven't, who aren't meeting, you know, our standards? And so that also kind of leads again to Glenn's discussion, you know, and how can we make sure some of those historically underperforming groups, how can we make sure that we're supporting all students and helping them achieve? How can we meet the needs of those students, their social emotional needs? How can we close those achievement gaps? And again, that behavior support. So those are kind of some of the big problems or challenges that we really want to help teachers tackle through our training. So with that in mind, I'm going to kind of break down the different categories for you. And the first and the largest, as Renee alluded to, is student academic learning. And so these, all these slides are just going to kind of be a sampling. So when you see curriculum implementation up there, that means all those areas that Shelley shared with you, they're going to be presenting. I spent a lot of time today entering and finalizing some of those workshops, and we've got lots of offerings. Curriculum coordinators are working really hard to meet the needs of their teachers. So you'll see there's writing, there's best practices, all those things. In addition to that, we're going to look at teacher instructional agility. You're going to meet the needs of a wide variety of students. You've got to be able to pivot and change and really be responsive. We're doing book studies, all those things. Some of those assessment systems, CSO, Formative Mastery Connect, lots of options out there. One of the questions that we get asked is, can teachers go to things outside of Rockwood? Are there conferences or things, especially for those specialists? So if you look at this list, you'll see that from added up on down, those are all content-specific conferences that are being offered in the area or virtually that teachers are signed up to attend. Our curriculum coordinators have vetted them. They've supported them. So teachers are going to be able to fulfill their contract with those various specific conferences. Any questions about that category?
How do we pay for teachers to attend those conferences? Is that coming out of your budget, or is it coming out of building principal budget?
Typically, if it's a content-specific budget, curriculum coordinators have a budget to support their teacher learning. Our office does support some of that learning, but we primarily support more generalized learning. But yeah, and then Shelley, if you have anything to add. But yeah, curriculum coordinators have a budget set aside to support teacher learning. So one thing we like to do when we plan, the size of our district really allows us to bring in nationally and internationally renowned speakers that can reach a large audience of teachers. And so this summer, our featured speaker is Cassandra Irkin. And, you know, as you can see here, she's got a great resume. She's very, she's coming to us from Solution Tree. She really is going to help us focus on supporting our professional learning communities. That's something that teachers are asking. They know they need one another if they're going to meet all those diverse student needs. Several of us had the opportunity to hear her speak. She's come and talked to class teams. Middle school teachers got to hear her in February as part of our middle school edit. And so, you know, really, she's an expert. So when they ask for that specialized knowledge, we needed to bring in someone with a lot of expertise who could support them. She's going to talk about instructional agility this summer. One of the things, one of my favorite things about Dr. Irkin is her main message that assessment practices have to build hope, efficacy, and achievement for learners and teachers. If we're going to see the kind of growth we want in our students, they have to believe that they can achieve that growth. They have to believe that they can evaluate where they're at and that they can get better. They have to understand their strengths and their weaknesses in order to grow. So that's just, you know, one of the key messages that she really brings to our teachers, and we hope they'll pass on. and we hope they'll pass on to their students. Next, under the topic of universal equity, opportunity and access. So this is the U in success. We're going to have Jamie Wellborn come and offer a three-day cultural proficiency training that will be open to all teachers, but you know, open to anyone and could lead to a certification in that area. We're going to be offering teachers the opportunity to attend the elevated English learner success. And then obviously, John Crown Apple and Belonging in a Culture of Dignity is going to be working with administrators. In addition to that, we've got some book studies that you'll see over here. The book studies really are great because they, the need that Renee talked about, teachers who can't attend things in person due to outside obligations. Pretty much all of our book studies are asynchronous. They're accessed through Canvas. You have a window of time to complete them. They're very engaging, but they also offer flexibility. We have quite a few of those. Next, we've got character and well-being. Again, you can see here, some great book studies. We've got a restorative of practice, Practices Academy with John Converse from Ed Plus. He gets rave reviews. People love attending his sessions. We continue our work with Alive and Well STL. They're offering some new offerings this summer. As you can see, we continue to work with Charday Rigdon and her team to offer training and behavior support. So lots of opportunities in this area this summer. And then some of my favorite topics, we continue our work with our new teachers. We follow dusty guidelines in supporting our teachers and we go well above and beyond because we want them to have a great experience and stick around. We also support their mentors. We continue to provide national board support as well as tech support for the programs that we offer. Finally, we've got leadership. So we want to make sure that we're supporting administrators, new administrators and current administrators, as well as teachers who maybe are aspiring administrators or want to take on a leadership role in their building, whether that's as a department chair or whether as a committee leader or as a building leadership team member. So as you can see here, we are doing our Ignite Rockwood Administrator Program again this year, as well as some book studies that are also connected to leadership. I think that's it. Lots of opportunities. Do you guys have any questions about our offerings for the summer? Okay, and of course, you're invited to attend any of those offerings. I believe you'll work with Janet to kind of figure out, we've got a list we can share with you of what's being offered. We sign up to pick up if you can work with Janet to attend those. We'd love to see you at some of that learning this summer.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. Let's see. Next up, we have, I thought there was a motion with this one. I was just making sure. Next, we have Deb Cutrin coming up to talk to us about the Internet Content Filter and Cyber Security Update.
Good evening. You've heard me up here before to ask for approval for E-Rate purchases. And as part of our participation in the E-Rate program, we have certain requirements that we have to meet. So I'm here to talk about those. And I also just wanted to give you a really quick update on the new music cybersecurity insurance information. So this slide has some background information. I'm not going to read all of that, but I did want you to know that we have been participating in E-Rate since the late 90s. And I was not able to find the exact dollar amount for that, but I do have a dollar amount for what we have used, been receiving from E-Rate since I started working with it in 2016. So that amount is $1,600,444 that we have received as a supplement to us, or they call it a discount. So we pay 60% of ineligible product and they pay the other 40%. As part of that, one of our requirements is that we adhere to SIPA, the Children's Internet Protection Act. And part of that act requires that we have an Internet Content Filter in place and certain other components. So we have to have a policy for Internet usage. And in Rockwood, our policies are smaller and broad, whereas our regulations actually meet the requirement for this. It is, it has the meat of the, you know, has all the meat and all the details. So some of that is that we have to ensure that it has information about access to minors, of inappropriate matter on the Internet, that we provide safety and security when using electronic mail, chat rooms and other forms of direct electronic communications, that unauthorized access or so-called hacking activity is prohibited, as well as other unlawful online activities. And that we are monitoring for unauthorized disclosure, use and dissemination of personal information regarding minors, and that we take measures to restrict minors' access to inappropriate materials. And inappropriate materials are designated as by SIPA, as Internet access to pictures that are obscene, considered child pornography or harmful to minors in other ways. So we do filter at a level that is higher than what the Children's Internet Protection Act requires. And we regularly are reviewing our settings. We work with our staff and families, our students to make sure that we're allowing the educational and instructional processes without interfering with those. But we also are trying to make sure that we're adhering to these requirements. And then the last slide is a music cybersecurity update. So that's the Missouri Unified School Insurance Corporation. And multi-factor authentication is one of the seven controls that are required. And the reason I have that list called out is because that actually affects every employee that we have. They are requiring multi-factor authentication for anyone within email accounts. So that also affects all of the board members. And so if you have any questions, Bob or I are happy to help you with that. It's not difficult to set up. And then we also have another group of employees that will have to use multi-factor authentication for other systems. And those are typically people with elevated rights and additional access. The last two are our plans. And while I can't really discuss the details of the plans because they're technically closed by Missouri statute, I did want to let you know that we do have a cybersecurity plan. We do have an incident response plan. And they give us structure. They give us, in a crisis, you know, you're, you want something that you can get grab and look at and follow. And that's what the incident response plan does. The cybersecurity plan is a broader document. It, and we, it provides the structure for how we are addressing the district's cybersecurity needs and future needs and future responses. I also want to call out that it meets requirement MSIP 6 L10. So that is also checked off the list. And that is all I had. Tried to keep it short and sweet.
Thank you, Deb. Any questions?
Thank you.
This is a silly question, but does the filter only work on the Chromebooks that are issued to students? Students can't log in with their cell phones, correct?
So if a student logs into Rockwood Wi-Fi on their cellphone, they're also getting filtered, Internet, their Internet access filtered. If they are just using their data, it is not. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item is the proposed agenda for the May 4th, 2023 board meeting at Lafayette High School. And then we have our future agenda presentations and events to attend. This is the last April meeting. And then we hit the busy, busy month of May. So it's going to be a lot of celebrating of student achievement and lots of things going on in May and into a couple of days or two. So looking forward to that. As always, check your Google Calendar. All right. We have our final item is our last patron comment section. We have one patron comment for this section, so I'm going to go ahead and just read this before we get started. "We will now hear from those Rockwood patrons who have signed up to speak about non-agenda items. As a reminder, each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Combining time or giving your time to someone else to speak is not allowed. Only one speaker is allowed at the podium at a time. Please remember that comments about individual employees and/or students will not be permitted in public session. We expect that you will remain civil and respectful in your remarks, and if anyone becomes disruptive, we reserve the right to cut your three minutes short. Verbally aggressive language and vulgarity in any form is not acceptable, whether you're reading someone else's remarks or they are your own. It will not be tolerated. For your convenience, our three-minute time clock is ready. We welcome Jane Leahy Smith to the microphone."
First of all, I want to say Glenn, I love those graphs. Great use of axes. I came tonight and my plan was my super senior was supposed to come with me and to say goodbye in her homeschool. And we all know how that went last year. And oddly, on the list of what I'm going to talk about is why she's not here. 19 and a half years ago in October, Malia and I met with an amazing gentleman who retired and went over a list of everything I wanted for Malia in her time in Rockwood and future time in SSD. It was a very long list. I like lists. I started with, I wanted to be able to write her name. Malia learned to write her name, first, middle, end, and she wrote it everywhere, on walls, desks, floors, everywhere in my house. I wanted her to read. I said I would be happy if we made it to second grade. Like, you know, my, as a perspective, I have a total different perspective of what my children should do or don't. Well, she passed her VR test, which is vocational rehabilitation for a functional reading ability of fourth grade. Oddly, don't know what that really means, but that sounds way better than my plan. I wanted her to use a computer and a tablet. Malia was the Zoom rock star of the pandemic in our entire house. She could connect every one of my kids all the time. I will be happy if the government bans TikTok because she has her own channel. I wanted her to be in a play and a musical. We got to do that. We got to fight to do it and we got to do it again. I wanted her to go to prom. She's been to three. She had a prom in a bag with her friends that they made for sixty kids in Rockwood. We had one at our house. I wanted her to get a job. Well, she qualified for Roke Rehab and her plan is to apply to work in one of the Eureka Elementary School Zone tough periods. That was actually our original plan and that's what her plan still is. I hope she would be the rock star with the kid with Down syndrome that could drive. So I tried to teach my neurotypical. I'm very happy with Rockwood for helping me not have that happen. I wanted her to take care of herself in an emergency. They taught my daughter to use her cellphone. When she was in a car accident, she used her cellphone to communicate with someone to tell me that she wasn't deceased because my other child was in a different ambulance and she told me she thought Malia was dead. And that was something, wasn't on my original plan. And this gentleman told me that everything on my plan would change. Boy, did it change. But I got my original goals. And I think you guys as a district and SSD need a round of applause for everything you have done. And Malia will come on January or June 8th because she's out with her besties tonight that started Best Buddies and everything else because they're home from college.
Thank you. All right. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.